Hello there. Well, not as damp as I could have been.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Correctly drove me up to the door.
Could be snowier.
Okay.
Dialed in, okay, so keep these on?
Really nice things about you.
That works.
Hello. The mics are on. The mics are on, so just...
Mics are on, no saying... Yeah, right. Dennis O'Brooke. Well, too small for legislation interaction, but it's involved in your business, so... Probably tied up with the discussion, I don't know. Are you, uh... Going over anything tonight? Oh, I saw that, but I'd... Will you be public commenting on anything? Yes, right, exactly. Well, two ends, I'll give you six.
I called home, that had it.
No. No, I want to be in Florida. Uh, January, go down there for a golf trip. Twenty-two guys. From Miami, uh, they've already played in Miami, is it there? Miami's coming here.
So has Debbie moved over here?
Check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Audio check for tonight's council meeting.
Good point, I do not know.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
I just wonder if it's on purpose or if we should just move it back. I just wondered if we, you know, you and I could move it, move it back if...
Oh, yes, that's right. Yes, because we're confirming the tax rate.
Oh, yeah.
They put Debbie there just so that...
It was maximum flow to the jazz and stuff.
Heard that there are enormous numbers of very happy people coming to cheer us on today.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I'm having my coffee at five thirty.
When Dave played it new?
Uh, I might have what? I brought my caffeine in on the form.
I'll do that for you, I'll do that for that. This stuff to do, real stuff. I've got, all the ingredients are all sitting there, I was gonna do it today.
Hey, how are you?
Good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
How are you?
Good in there, you know? Doing my thing, you know? That's all I can do. Who's, uh, is this?
I think the assessor that happened in is why they have an extra light theater, I love it, they have an extra chair.
Yeah, this, this one's just floating over here.
I'm sure where it's for, I don't know, but it's Debbie's desk, I'm not sure where she wants to be. Not quite sure.
I guess they were trying to make a lot of room, it was, it was a lot of room.
Oh, really?
No. A lot of people.
There always are, aren't there?
A lot of room, that's what I heard.
Is there any other type of...
Taxes and water, you know?
You know?
But, there aren't chairs there, there's...
Yeah. Well, this is only for Shelley, right?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, she'll be... She'll, trust me, she'll want to come and want to leave. I know Shelley well.
It'll be nice to keep her away from the audience.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, no worries. Thank you.
Already forty-nine.
Check one, two.
I have to sit in it all night? I was like, she'll be here. Don't call me, it's, it's the best piece of advice you can get.
Couldn't sneak it in before.
Thank you, sir.
That's our sugar fix.
Hopefully, we don't need it while it's going on.
Oh, I might.
I like to save my graphics, it makes me feel like, oh.
And this has, this is my caffeine. Hello.
Hello, did you take a look at the freezers? You must have seen them when you came.
I did, yeah.
I took Dennis down to see him, he didn't know.
I hope they're up there good.
Oh, they are.
Yeah. Oh, where's Deb's, where's Deb gonna sit? Hey, how are you? Good, good to see you.
So, my suggestion is, I ride my bike from home, and I, it's a small bike path, and average, you know, and here. But, in the middle, block, center, actually outside, I still, crack, used to, stay, took over the park. Like, some very cute, uh...
There's always so much...
They're not venue seats, sir. And the kids, they're nice and well. They're arclized, and they have some nice little tables.
Just refer, yeah. I, I was, I was just...
I was wondering, was it a Gatte issue?
It might be worth, some ideas, something about... Travel around, so...
I'm sure I got one, like, what have I looked at, you know, whatever's going down the road.
If you can find out, I'll question you.
Yeah, that's just cute. It's a small, big, and then just...
So I, I couldn't...
I want to guess. You want to get a hint, huh?
Yeah.
And so, hearing out now, it's at the end, so I just, I'm like, oh, so, I need to add.
Okay, I, I took, I understand that all that's, like, that's what I mean, you know, you're talking about, wow, yeah, thank you, see, I just, like, you know, it's like, it's a frog.
That's great.
You're just sort of...
Yeah, I just, I have a, I have a, thank you, hi.
And then I'll get shit to that.
If you want to go, you know, we're targeting, you know, happen, tell me, the road that's on, you fall down on the ground.
Put it back in.
They're all here to hear Shelley. They're all here to hear Shelley.
I couldn't agree, huh?
Particularly Frank gets here, he makes no balls, it's such a personal, no one showed up.
No. No, the local, we're talking.
Hi.
Get out of here with this. Right behind me?
Hey, I got a straw and some spitballs.
I'm glad I'm sitting over here.
She texts you and go, you're one of those stupid... Stretch.
Creeping on me, yeah.
Howdy.
What's going on?
Too much, yourself?
Too much.
We're already over time.
Yeah, let's go hustle, hustle, that's all right, people still walking in, so...
Yeah.
Brad and the rest of the AP crew, me are trying to work on the speakers, um, we don't have them for the moment. It is, we do have audio on twenty-two, YouTube. I think we're trying to work on it, but it's got first steps, so...
All right, so...
Yeah, so, the councilor still put their microphones on, talk into them like normal. Anything without microphone, everything's on right now, I have the microphone live.
Okay.
I warned the councillors before, so...
Okay.
Yeah, when you guys...
So we just won't hear ourselves projected in this room?
Right. I'd be for that to happen, so...
So let everybody know that they're, they're being recorded, being broadcasted, but we may not hear that echoing.
Yeah, I would just say, like, audio's being captured through YouTube and recording.
Yeah.
They can hear you live on TV, we just hear it in the room, so just talk on the microphone.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
No worries. As long as we don't sound like Transformers again.
It's really, it's really messed up, I mean, it is, it is really bad.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hello.
Let me know, I don't know if all the other councillors are aware.
Since last week?
Oh, that's almost...
Where do you need this microphone?
Gotcha.
Oh, there's one there, sorry.
Speak loud and proud.
Did you say, speak loud to the crowd?
It says, loud in general.
This better not be a permanent thing. Is that the problem, the speakers in the room? Didn't we just vote to upgrade the system already?
Dude, how old?
Excuse me? Oh, the mic's working.
It do work.
The time is now seven oh four PM, I will now call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube, please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. Tonight, I do have some condolences from our veterans' agent, please join me in remembering Mr. James Flynn, US Marines, served in Vietnam, passed away on November thirteenth. Richard Montville, US Army, Korean era, passed away on November fifteenth. David Frayer, US Navy, World War II, passed away on November eighteenth. David Roscoe, US Navy, Vietnam era, passed away on November twenty-eighth. Please, um, join me in a moment of silence for these veterans who have passed and all previous Bridgewater veterans and their families. Thank you. I also understand that Mr. Frayer is one of, or was one of two remaining World War II veterans, and we are particularly saddened for, for his loss. So now we'll move on to item A, approval of minutes from previous meetings, I'll entertain a motion for approval in a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, and do we have any discussion on the meeting, uh, meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have announcements from the President, I know that we have a lot of folks here this evening in regard to the water discussion, so I just wanted to read a brief statement to you all. Good evening, residents and members of the public, thank you for being here, many of you have joined us tonight to speak about Bridgewater's ongoing water quality challenges, an issue that weighs on me every day in service to this community. One of the reasons I stepped forward last year to serve was to bring my background as a civil engineer to, to a town whose infrastructure, in my opinion, has been in critical condition for far too long. The problems with water quantity and quality have been bubbling beneath the surface for more than a decade, and now they are central to long-term success and health of our community. I often look at organizations, and in this case, our town, through the lens, if some of you are familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. At the top are the nice-to-haves, the amenities that improve our quality of life, beneath that are the things that make our community strong, public education, senior services, recreation, and programs for our youth. Below that is public safety, police, fire, EMS. But none of that stands if the foundation is weak. At the base of the pyramid, the level everything else depends on, are the basic physiological necessities, safe roads, stormwater, sewer, public health, and clean, reliable drinking water. If we fail at the foundation, the whole structure fails. For too long, Bridgewater has not been prioritizing these foundational needs in the way our residents deserve, and that must change. We cannot ignore the foundation and expect our community to thrive. It is my commitment and the commitment of this council, working side by side with our town manager, who is six months into his role, to reset our priorities and rebuild from the ground up. We need to get back to the basics, to protect the essentials, to focus relentlessly on the core systems, especially clean, portable water, that every resident relies on every single day. This isn't only about water, it's about restoring trust, rebuilding capacity, and securing the future of Bridgewater. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your passion, and thank you for holding us to the highest standard possible. Tonight's discussion is part of that commitment, and we are ready here to do the work. Thank you. I will also send the mic over to our town manager, who also has a few things to, to start with.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I want to say, water infrastructure has been a priority issue of this council, our leadership team, and of mine, since I've become town manager. Every resident deserves access to high-quality water, while less than five percent of the town's population is affected by discolored, discolored water, the fact that even one resident has to deal with this is unacceptable. That's why we're doing everything we can to resolve this issue as soon as possible. I'm going to reiterate many of the things we have said here at previous council meetings, since I've been town manager, but first, a couple of quick facts. Over the past several months, we've had more presentations or discussions about our water infrastructure than we've had over the previous couple of years, since I've been town manager. We've done so to be clear and transparent about how we are addressing our water infrastructure challenges, I provided... I provided updates in my town manager operational updates, and I've held listening informational sessions where we've discussed our water infrastructure, the challenges we face, the plan we have, and the plan we will execute. Ultimately, this issue will be resolved when we integrate wells 10A and 10B into the High Street Water Treatment Facility. By doing so, we will finalize the filtration process to mitigate discoloration. That is the long-term plan, and we continue to do that work. At our last meeting where we discussed this water situation, we outlined our efforts to expedite that process and hope to reduce the expected two-year timeframe for completion of that project. We explore intermediate solutions and continue to evaluate any options that are financially feasible or address the issues we face. I've personally directed my team to explore all available options. As I've said several times, I've said the same thing to our water consultants, our engineering teams, and even in discussions with DEP, I've said if there's anything we are missing or could be exploring, please contact me directly, as I want to do whatever we can to mitigate this issue. This has been a priority from my mind from day one, and this started even before I became town manager of this great community. We've also outlined that we are working towards short-term solutions as well, hopefully, and exploring emergency interconnections with neighboring communities. Those discussions have been ongoing for far longer than we've talked about this in council meetings, and we continue to try to make progress there. However, we have to be cognizant that those opportunities are dependent on other towns as well, and that there are multiple logistical issues that we are navigating that requires regulatory processes, financial processes, and negotiations with these other communities, but that work is being done. I want to acknowledge, we hear your frustration. I've entertained many calls and emails regarding this. There are no simple solutions, and we thank you for your patience, no matter how frustrating it is. We are doing everything we can in collaboration with our state regulatory agency and our partners to fulfill our commitment to ensuring that all residents of Bridgewater have access to quality drinking water. I know it's frustrating to hear, but these issues did not develop overnight, and unfortunately, they will not be resolved overnight either. I can understand the frustration of those affected, and I wish I had a solution to address this issue yesterday, but the truth is, there's nothing we can do that we are not already doing to mitigate it. This has been a number-one priority for myself, the council, and my team, and I want you to know that. I've said it multiple times, and I'm going to stand by that. And we will continue those efforts until it is resolved, and I will make sure we continue to keep the council and this community prized of the work we are doing.
Thank you. We do not have any proclamations. We will now move on to citizen open forum. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anybody can come up at this time and speak for up to three minutes. I know we do have a lot of folks here this evening, so I'm going to have the timer, so please keep it to three minutes if possible. And Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I am not on the agenda tonight. It's Dennis Gallagher, 160 South Drive here in Bridgewater, and the state representative for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional District Eight. I want to address the council and the town tonight about the water situation that I have been following, reading about, and talking to many of you guys about over these last several weeks, and it is disheartening to see what is happening to some of our residents, regardless of whether it's 1% or 5%. You know, we can all get on social media, and we can put things out there that are false, that are half-truths, that are stories that make no sense, but in this case, what I saw on Facebook with the page that was created and the pictures that were being shown, those are real. That is not made up, that is not exaggeration, and I think that, and I know the town manager, I know the council president, I know all of you are taking this as serious as you can, and it is disheartening to see, and I really feel bad for the residents that are going through this. And I just want to speak to say that I have been in contact with DEP, the town has been in contact with DEP, to come to head as to what some of our immediate responses, immediate solutions can be, and I'm sure that those will be addressed later tonight at the meeting, and I'm sure that those will be remedies. You're right, it might not happen tonight, but I'm sure that whether it's a partnership with Middleborough or whatever, I think that's important, but I will do what I can at the state level to try to help this town with this situation, and pretty much any situation. I'm here to help, and I want to be a voice of concern to the state in these particular situations. This is very unacceptable. I do want to bring up to Mr. President, if I could for a second, is, you know, it was only a few short years ago where I was sitting on the council, and the prior town manager with the water department did present a 40-year plan to address our ongoing water infrastructure needs. And during the period that I was on, and Councilor Perry was, I'm sure he was on there as well, that we did receive a zero-interest loan at that time to help with some of the upgrades for our water treatment plants. That was step one to address the ongoing infrastructure needs for our water and sewer plant, and that's ongoing. It's an everyday situation here in the town, but we need to step up to the plate, I think, a little bit more to address some of these concerns and immediate action. So, you know, I just want you to know, I'm here, and I will do what I can at the state level to help this town out with this situation, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuff to Amelia, Harvest Lane. I guess the town has decided to get together, and now you can hear us now. It's definitely, in my opinion, an emergency situation. Mr. Davis, there are 9,567 residential units in Bridgewater, and 5% of that is 478.35 homes. I think your numbers are off. I think every residential unit in this town is affected by poor water quality, regardless if it's brown, or clear, or whatever it is, there's PFAS everywhere, so 5% is incorrect. I don't know where you're getting your information, and when you ask for patience, this correspondence is going back all the way to 2016. I think we've been patient enough.
Hi, my name's Justin Mantel. I live at 533 Forest Street, been a resident of Bridgewater for 10 years, right around 2016 where I just, this is my first town meeting, so hello. Anyway, my wife and I are about to have our first kid, and when we moved here, we started talking about, like, when we became aware of the PFAS, we weren't comfortable drinking the water ourselves, so we got a homehouse filter. It was not cheap to get a plumber to come do it, but we did it because our laundry was getting ruined, and we just wanted to feel more comfortable about our own water quality. We're about to move into an RO system because with the baby coming, I mean, I'm not really comfortable with my wife drinking water, being pregnant right now. Anyway, we talk about this all the time, so I'm kind of curious of, I know it's a stepped process, and it's metered, and all those things, and patience, but is there anything that maybe residents of Bridgewater that have to come out of pocket for home filtration, for RO systems, or charp, cold filters, or whatever it might be? Maybe we could get like some sort of break on that, because we are paying taxes, and then also on top of it, paying for water quality in our own homes, so it's just something I wanted to float.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's William Balfour, 40 Tarkin Hill Lane, Bridgewater. I've been a resident of the town for 31 years. First, I'd like to thank the families who reached out to the media. Fortunately, I have clean water coming out of my faucet. I do not necessarily rely upon it. We drink a lot of bottled water, we use bottled water for our cooking. To the opening statements, I understand the town manager, where he's coming from, affects a small population. Like the gentleman who was just up here a few minutes ago, my perspective is, it does not affect a small population, it affects the entire town. It affects the reputation of this town, it affects the members of the government that we have elected, and our children. We are looking to have this issue addressed. Yes, there's been new people elected, but as was earlier stated, this has been an ongoing issue in the town, and we are looking for action to make sure this issue is addressed as quickly as possible. That being said, I, and I'm sure other members of the town, are looking for timelines, action plans. I know you folks are looking into that, getting it. We would like to have that as quickly as possible so that we know what is going to happen, because this issue is a serious issue. If you look back in history, throughout the United States, there were other towns in other states that have had water issues that have been taken lightly over the years. It turned out to be very serious. Now, I know that I do not want to be drinking water out of my faucet that has excessively high mineral levels, whether it's manganese, iron, whatever it is, and I look to each and every one of you to be able to guide this matter to resolution as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joel Thomas. I live on 25 Alverona Road. Some of the things I'm going to say here tonight refer back to the old town manager, the old water superintendent, so there's dates in it, just, but as we know, Bridgewater is Bridgewater. No matter who said it, we have to act on it. Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak about the water quality issues affecting every resident in Bridgewater who relies on town water. The condition of our water has become deplorable, the discoloration unacceptable, and the inability to perform simple, everyday tasks in our homes is discouraging. Our residents deserve better. On November 18th, 2025, the town manager stated that the water has been a priority for the town, that they are trying to expedite improvements, and these issues did not happen overnight and cannot be fixed overnight. That much is true, but the historical record also shows that these problems have been unfolding for years, often with little transparency. According to the limited information on the town's own website, PFAS levels have increased since 2023. While some point out that the levels were still within passing limits at that time, did anyone address the steady rise before it became a crisis, or was it overlooked? On September 27th, 2022, the town manager reported that our water was safe to drink and that testing was performed daily in the town's water lab, with consistent, acceptable results posted online. Yet, the public cannot find results prior to 2023. Where is that data? Just two weeks earlier, on September 13th, 2022, the town manager stated that the water had been recurring, issue had been recurring all summer, including the withdrawal permit, drought-related supply concerns, and PFAS. Counselors questioned how the system would handle increased demand from returning college students and continued development. The response was that increasing the withdrawal permit was the first step. In that same meeting, the water superintendent shared that Bridgewater draws 1.7 million gallons per day, though the EPA previously allowed 2.4 million. When researching with the Mass EPA, I couldn't find the 2.4 million listed anywhere. He also noted that it was a tough process and that they were waiting on the flushing program to help. How will flushing help our limited water quality? On August 2nd, 2022, during a drought, the town manager announced an outside water ban due to low water levels, low water towers. 10 wells were running without rest since June 26th, and residents were warned of possible discoloration and mineral disturbance, along with the potential risks to the wells themselves. That was more than two years ago. More recently, on June 21st, 2024, when well 10B was turned back on to shore up supply, residents again were told to expect slight discoloration, though the water was safe to drink. At that time, PFAS levels were already noted at 20. These examples come from the town's website and local reporting. Together, they painted a clear picture. Yes, the issues did not happen overnight, but they also have not been treated as the priority, as the town claims. The evidence points to a fundamental reality. Bridgewater does not have enough water to support current demand, let alone additional homes, apartments, and businesses. The infrastructure is strained, aging, and unable to keep up. For that reason, I urge the council to enact a moratorium on any new connections to the municipal water system until the town can provide sufficient water for residents who already live here. Thank you.
Eugene Campbell, 74 Pearl Street, Bridgewater. We're not going to complain about the color of the water, because we don't have color, we're in the center, we don't have color issues, but we do feed our chickens with it, which is a problem, because then we eat the eggs, because you're not supposed to drink it. We have to go to Blue Drop twice a month. Luckily, we have that, whoever did that, but Brendan, it's a great place. Does cost us time and money to go there. Luckily, it's free, but the most complaint we have is when you brush your teeth or anything, you get bad smell of chlorine, bad taste of chlorine. I mean, do you got, I don't know for sure if I could do this, but how many of you live in this town, like, raise your hands? You live here, too? Okay, so with us not being able to source water from another town, which we can't do, right, or we could? Anyone have an answer to that, or?
Can't answer the question.
Because I believe we can buy it from another town, right? And that would have to come from the taxpayers, but meanwhile, our prices have only gone up. Our water bill has gone up, our usage has gone up, disposal has gone up, and it hasn't stayed the same, which it at least should have, or gone down, or we should have seen some kind of a, any kind of a discount. We don't have any of that, and it continues to go up, and all we have is worse water, and people saying they're going to fix it. So this is what's happening. I moved here from a big city. I'm moving out of here. My neighbors are moving out of here, like, we're leaving. We're not waiting for it. There's other opportunities in other cities that, it's probably not none of you guys' fault, but it's unfortunate, because we have a big family, we have a farm, chickens, pets, we have a lot of pets, we have, you know, a great opportunity for the city, we provide a lot for the community, we did a huge haunted house for everybody, we do a lot of nice things for the community, and we try and partake in things for the community, but at this point, we're bailing. Within two years, we'll be gone, because it ain't going to be fixed by then. So I appreciate you guys for all you do, but just to let you know, the people are leaving. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. I'm Kim, Chair Messino, 45 Curve Street, and I've been up at this podium because of the 40B project going on behind my house, and I'm just worried, honestly, about the content of the water and the supply of the water, because we've been growing exponentially, and the amount of houses that are behind my house right now is just growing beyond compare. And it's awesome to have new neighbors, but they said the traffic wouldn't increase on my little road, and it has, and the water supply, as this gentleman just said, it tastes like chlorine. You know, I am pretty close to some of the neighbors that have brown water, but we don't luckily have brown water every day, but I drew a bath for my dog the other day, and it was totally brown, so I think that I just needed to stand up and say that, like, I think we need to, like, slow the roll on the grow, and nice to meet you, sir.
Donna Jewell, 50 Keith Place. I don't have the same type of problem with the brown water that others have experienced, and I know that's a very serious issue that needs to be addressed, but I also wanted to make everyone aware, too, that I think the problem is starting to shift more to the other areas of town that have not experienced the problem. And the reason I say that is, we have a whole house, a pretty sophisticated whole-house water filtration system, and we used to only have to change the filters once every six months. My husband was faithful about doing that. Then it came once every five months, then it's once every three months, and we started to every other month, and we're probably going to have to go to once a month. It's getting worse. So there's something more going on than just what those two wells are going to handle or take care of. I think we have a bigger problem than we're really aware of. The chlorine smell, for sure. On my way here, an neighbor texted me and said, "Did your water smell like rotten eggs before you left tonight?" Said it did. Said it did. And these are things that hadn't happened before, and now are happening on the west side of town. So while we're addressing that, I think we have to address the town in its entirety with the water. And I know you've all talked about how things have happened over the last five, 10 years, but we keep hearing two more years, two more years. And I don't want to be standing up here in another year and hearing that it's two more years or five more years. The problem's growing, and I think you need to be aware of that.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you very much. There is another comment period at the end of the meeting as well. Okay, next up, we have appointments. First up, under the Citizens Advisory Committee, we have John Harrington. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this appointment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, also for Citizens Advisory Committee, Stephanie Holmgren. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, for Board of Health reappointment, William Prince. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion on this one?
Question. How many members are there on the Board of Health? And where are, do we know the number?
No. We have one member now. We had a resignation, so we're advertising that this is a good opportunity to say we're looking for people to to apply for the Board of Health. That will be one of our next committees that we'll post on Facebook. We're looking for more membership there.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, do we do we have a chair of that committee at the moment?
Mr. Prince has been the, is the only member that's been a part of that board before.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have hearings. So first, we have petition 2025, sorry, 2026-004, petition for National Grid for joint or identical poll locations. This is for Winter Street. This is a continued public hearing. It was originally advertised in the October 21 Enterprise. We are continuing this public hearing tonight. It is now 7:33 PM, and I'm going to ask, do we have a National Grid representative here tonight? Nope, we don't have any updates there. So next up, we'll go to the audience to see if we have anybody from the audience who would wish us to to speak, either in opposition. Please.
Scott Smead, 325 Winter Street. I was up a few weeks ago, same problem. We had some gentlemen from the town come over, had the plans, which no one on the street has seen, just, I think that's an issue to begin with, but he still couldn't answer questions like how far the road's moving into our front yards. This problem is really, and I was only dealing with about five people. It's huge. I alone, I just did the math quick, I think it's something like 2,700 square feet in my front yard I lose. That's 27 feet in possibly by, I'm guessing, about 100 wide. I'm going to go from a nine-car driveway to a three. It's huge. And he says this because the other side of the street is on the neighbor's property by about three feet. But he can't answer my question of why that's going to move my side 27 feet. So there has to be something in between before these polls are even a discussion. There shouldn't be a plan yet, because they can't tell us where those polls are going to be. Yeah, I guess that's that's about the gist of it. It's just, we want answers, we just don't, we want the new road, of course, but that's a third, possibly half of my front yard. I can already, if I'm laying in bed, I can feel the cars going by rumbling under me. I can't imagine if now it's 15 feet from my front door instead of 45. I can't imagine, you guys have been directing these huge trucks down our street for the last, what, two, three years? Just because you take a detour off doesn't mean the trucks aren't going to keep coming that way. That's going to be 15 feet from my bedroom window. It's just very frustrating. I'm going to have a foot and a half to back out of my own driveway, very dangerous. I just don't understand. And the gentleman with the map, he kept changing how far he's coming in. He couldn't tell me at all, so I kept guessing. It's going to be six feet, it's going to be 12 feet, it's going to be 20 feet. And every time I said that, he said yes. So I don't know what that means. I don't know where we stand. But no matter what, someone's mistake from 50 years ago is now going to have these huge trucks outside my bedroom window. 50 years. And a matter of three feet on the other side coming in, he said that pole, which is, I measured it's 27 feet in from the road right now, they could put that road right there. But they, he couldn't tell me if that's the plan, because all I can see is a sketch with no dimensions of where the road, how far the road is shifting. There's no, there were no dimensions there, and he couldn't tell me. So I beg everyone to please look at these plans. I know this is a mistake from 50 years ago, I know it has to go from that, but it doesn't mean that you have to take that. Just because you can doesn't mean you have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak, either in opposition or in support? So councillors, do we have any, any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this further. We don't have the National Grid rep, and we need to get some answers.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion on continuing.
I also think it's a bigger conversation than just National Grid coming back in. I think having all plans being as transparent as possible, a resident shouldn't have to interpret plans for a municipality that's basically stating that part of their lawn is going to be taken. I can't imagine going from what they have. I've driven by their home, and it's a mess. National Grid comes and goes as much as they want, and I don't think that that's fair to a resident in our town anywhere. So I do think that continuing it is smart. I also need to be very clear that whether we support it or not, we can't really take our foot off the gas, making sure that this resident feels heard and seen, whether it's over a pole or not. It doesn't stop at a pole, it doesn't start with a pole, it starts with the infrastructure of the street, and I think we need to do a better job of making sure that we're educating our residents.
Thank you.
Yep, I completely agree with Councilor Strickles. I went down to the property, I did speak to the residence partner. The pole is very far in their front yard, there's confusion over the plot maps, and I looked up on the Axis site myself to see where the lines were for the road, where the plot lines were, and I'm also not understanding how the town is moving that far in, if it's just based solely on polls, or what kind of data is being used. So in the best interest of the resident, who, if I was in their shoes, I would also be very upset by this. I would just like it to be sorted out in a way that is amicable for the town, because I also want to see Winter Street fixed. It is a big problem, but I don't think we should do that at the cost of the residents that live on the street, especially if this is something that we can clear up and clearly define where we're at, so.
Thank you.
Yes, I am in agreement as well. I just, you know, before this is brought forth back to us again, I would like to see some specific measurements, as he's very confused, as the resident's confused about the different numbers he's hearing. How far are these poles being moved? How far is the street being moved? I'd like to see some actual numbers to go along with this, so the entire council would have an idea of what they're voting on. So again, I would suggest we get some specific numbers before this is brought back forth to us.
Thank you. Anything further, councillors? Yeah, I would, I would agree. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to have a presentation, but with some real, real numbers, real dimensions, because this map, this doesn't really show anything. Our town manager, do we have any, any updates?
Mr. President, the plan was for that to occur this evening. Unfortunately, you know, our DPW director has the flu and isn't here, and couldn't be here, but that's what we intend to do. We respect to continue this meeting. You know, as was alluded, the layout of this road was laid out incorrectly many years ago, and the right of way is a little confusing, but that's what we plan on doing on our next council meeting. We'll have a zoo, we'll lay it out, and just be transparent about that, about the work that needs to be done in order to move forward on Winter Street. But I support continuing that hearing as well.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion to continue the the hearing. The time now is 7:39 PM. Oh, you already made the motion, I'm sorry. We already have the second we're discussing, sorry. Lost track. So all those in favor of continuing?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. And for me personally, sorry you have to keep coming out and advocating for yourself. Hopefully, we sort this out soon enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny, just a comment on that. We have to continue to the next meeting, right? It has to be a set date.
Yeah, you have to do it, it has to be the next meeting, because it's a continuous public hearing.
Okay, so we have to just make the note of the date.
Yeah.
To our town council, how best should I redo that motion?
You can just make another motion, just make a new motion to a date certain, that's fine.
Mark, do you want to just make another motion to our next date, which is the 16th?
16th.
I'll make the motion to continue it to December 16th.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Next up, hearing that we have is FY 26-030, Tax, Classification, Tax Allocation, Adoption of a Residential Factor. This public hearing was advertised in the 1123 Enterprise. I will now open the hearing. It is 7:41 PM, and we do have a presentation on this.
Good evening. My name is Shelley McCauley. I'm the chief assessor in town. The Classification Act requires municipalities to classify real property into one of four categories: residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Personal property is a separate category and is treated as a class for purposes of allocating the tax levy. City and towns that are certified as assessing property at full and fair cash value may elect to shift the tax burden among the major property classes within certain limits established by law. The adoption of different rates does not change the total property tax levy, rather, it determines the share of the total levy to be borne by each class. At the classification hearing tonight, I will preprovide the information necessary to make the classifications decisions. Before setting the tax rate, there are actions that are required. We have to determine the maximum amount it can levy under Proposition 2.5. We have to establish final values for all taxable real and personal property, and we have to decide the property tax policies. Each of these actions is documented in forms that are approved by the DOR. Our maximum levy this year for 2026 is equal to last year's levy, plus amended new growth, plus 2.5%, plus 2026 new growth, plus the debt exclusion, and it equals $64,269,882. Our final 2026 tax base growth was $521,178, which was certified by DOR on 11/3/2025. Our final values were also certified by the DOR on 11/3/2025, and our total real and personal property total taxable value is $5,338,923,040. In order to decide our tax policy, we must hold a public hearing before it can make any decision on the tax rate options of a single or multiple tax rate, an open space discount, a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption. And for tonight's presentation, only the decision to adopt a single or split tax rate will be discussed. In order to select a residential factor, the town council must decide the percentage of each tax levy each class will bear. A residential factor is adopted to determine the percentage of the tax levy to be paid. The adopted factor cannot be less than the minimum factor calculated by the DOR, which is 91.52 this year, and if a factor of one is adopted, the tax rate would be the same for all classes. This year, the residential percentage of value was 85.49%. Commercial, industrial, and personal property percentage of value was 14.51%. As stated before, the value of the town is $5,338,923,040. Our levy this year is $64,227,244. So as stated, if a residential factor of one equals a single tax rate, it is estimated to be $12.03. Also, I calculated options ranging from 1 to 1.50 and 5% increments to show the various increments that each class would pay. 5% increase would increase the average SIP tax burden by 685 and decrease the residential by $62. On page nine, I have also estimated the average single-family value this year at 616,769, and I put our tax bill calculations from 1 to 1.50 with all the different amounts. The estimated average commercial value was $1,142,124. The estimated percentage average single-family values in tax increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26, it was a 3.8% value increase, $593,992 in 2025, and $616,769 in '26. This equals a 5.6% tax bill increase from '25 to '26 of $7,027 versus $7,420. It was, that would be a $393 increase from fiscal year '25 to '26, and it was a $290 increase from fiscal year '24 for '25. The CPA would be a 6.85% dollar increase from '25 of $116.88 versus $124.33, which is a $7.045 increase. Estimated percentage average commercial value, classes 300 to 393, and their tax increase is 0.13% value decrease from fiscal year '25 of $1,143,574 versus $1,142,124 for fiscal year '26. That's a 1.56% tax bill increase from fiscal year '25 of $13,529 versus $13,740. That's a $211 increase from '25 to '26, and there was a $909 increase from fiscal year '24 to '25. CPA dollar increase is a 1.56% from $270.57 to $274.80, which is a $4.23 increase. I also included in the packet tax rates and tax shifts from neighboring communities. As you can see, we're very competitive in our surrounding communities, and our average 2024 single tax bill ranked 152. Additional information if I have the town council tonight, as stated, the levy was $64,227,244, and our maximum levy limit was $64,269,882, which leaves an excess capacity for the current fiscal year calculated at $42,637,84. Excess capacity for the prior fiscal year was calculated at $23,391,47. Also, debt exclusion this year is approximately $1.15 of the tax rate. Split tax rate consideration that should be taken into consideration, will an increase in the tax burden on commercial, industrial, personal property significantly lower the residential tax burden? How much is the big business versus small business? Will it adversely affect small businesses and drive them out of the community? Will it slow or limit big business development? Is this the right time to shift to a multiple rate? Single tax rate versus split tax rate? A single ad valorem rate means that property owners pay a share of local government costs in direct proportion to the value of their property. A split tax rate often causes small businesses to experience a significant tax increase while residential property owners see only a minimal decrease. Shifting tax burdens may affect collections, appeals, and long-term growth of our tax base. In short, tax policy decisions have real impacts on residents and businesses. Most communities do not shift the tax burden from the residential and open space classes to the other classes of real and personal property. Generally, the communities that do so have been doing so for many, many years. The Board of Assessors at their last scheduled meeting voted to recommend a single tax rate, and historically, Bridgewater has always maintained a single tax rate.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask anyone from the public that to come up and At this time, we'll ask anyone from the public to come up and speak in favor of either one position or another, because I know there's a lot of options out here. So if anyone would like to come up and speak? Okay. Seeing none. We also have a portion where you can come up and speak in opposition, but obviously we have a number of options out there. Would anyone like to come up and speak in opposition? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open the conversation to councilors then.
Happy to take the lead here. Just as a perspective, this is something I think we've considered, by law, have considered every year, but for myself personally, a split tax rate has been something that's been on the table for us to explore. But ultimately shifting, I think, my opinion here would be shifting the tax burden to our businesses within Bridgewater would be a detriment, because here in Bridgewater, we don't have many major corporations or large entities for retail. We have a lot of small, family-owned businesses, and to shift that burden on our small, family-owned businesses, I don't think is an appropriate approach for us, given that really the result would be minimal to the residents and major to those family-owned businesses or businesses in town. So for me, I think keeping the factor at a one makes a lot of sense, but that's just my opinion itself here.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilor Murphy. I think we do have a lot of small businesses in our town. This is going to hit a lot of people locally, not large corporations, and one of the few drivers we do have to advertise for Bridgewater for businesses is a lower tax rate. I'd like to see that kind of grow, but I don't think increasing that now is going to be something that we should be doing, and I also would agree, the Board of Assessors is also not in favor of splitting the tax rate as well, which I think is great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is apartment, are they under residential? Taxes residential or commercial?
Residential.
Residential. The other question I was wondering if you could do for us. Last year, you did a house value at $650,000, and you showed the town residents how much tax would. Could you do that for the new rate that we're going to have?
Say that one more time.
So last year, the house rate, you use a house rate of $650,000. You divided it by 1,000, which equaled 650, and then you times that by the tax rate. So could you do that, like take 600? I don't have a calculator. Could you take the 650 and tax it by the new rate, the 12.03? To see what the increase of the...
That's on page...
I don't have my glasses on. I don't have my glasses on. Sorry.
It's on page nine.
And what is that?
On page nine, there's an estimated average single-family value, and Shelley has it 616,769. If you keep that same rate, it's right at the top there, the estimated fiscal year '26 tax bill. It's $7,420.
It's $7,420.
Is that what she's asking?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that's what it was, but last year, the rate came to $7,689. So I was confused why...
Because last year, we had a different tax rate and a different average single-family assessment.
Oh, okay.
Numbers are always going to be different.
I always thought it would go up and not down.
If we shift it, it's going to always go down in residential side and up on the commercial side.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes. While I agree to a point with two of my fellow councilors, I don't think we want to tax small business owners more money, but we have a tax rate that's been pretty stagnant for years, and if we need increased revenue, I think we have to get it from the big businesses that are in town. We have an empty warehouse sitting on Broad Street. Who knows what's going to be there, but it could be Amazon. I'd love to see them taxed at a higher rate, to be quite honest.
Of all the communities that are neighboring communities, we are the lowest tax rate around, and we're also the highest value. So the homes are worth more money than all the other communities. East Bridgewater, Halifax, Middleborough, Rainham, West Bridgewater. Although we are 152, we have all 351, but I just wanted him to make sure he knew that part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the idea of tax increases on big business only, but we're not discussing that tonight, are we? Like, differentiating between small business and large business?
Correct. That's the small commercial exemption.
So if we were to vote for a split tax rate, that automatically goes on the small business? Or can we take remedial steps?
Automatically goes on to the all-commercial, industrial, and personal property.
So how do we give the small business exemption?
That's a whole different tax policy. That's a whole different option. We do have a personal property exemption just for the personal property, not the real estate, and we have a $5,000 threshold right now, but if you wanted to do a small commercial exemption, you would have to...
Does each business have to apply for the exemption or like individual exemptions?
Yeah, so we get a list, and each assessor is given a list every year, and then we would have to determine from there who is eligible and who is not. The only negative implications with that is that if the parcel is not owner-occupied, the tax benefit goes to the property owner and not the small business owner. It's difficult to track, and the additional workload would require, you know, more people. And depending on the ownership, the burden is sometimes shifted to other small businesses, too.
Like the person leasing the space gets the increase?
So in other words, you can't guarantee who's going to be getting the benefit.
I, too, have looked...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, there's other criteria. They have to be occupied by a business with an average of annual employment of 10 or under, and they have to have an assessed valuation of a million before the application of the exemption.
A million dollars in revenue the business has to have before they get an...
Their assessment. Okay. The real estate. Okay.
As other councilors have alluded to, this has been a common conversation amongst us on how we can potentially combat some of our revenue issues that we all are very aware and cognizant of. One thing that I do just want to stress is having a low commercial rate has not increased our commercial tax base. So unlike other communities like Middleborough, for example, I looked at that Middleborough number, and their commercial rate is only slightly higher, and that in and of itself, I mean, you drive through Middleborough and there's plenty of commerce and spread-out commerce, great commerce for the residents in Middleborough, but it's not such a severe increase that wouldn't be as burdensome as, say, Dyton. Dyton has a very strong split tax rate where the commercial rate is very high, yet it sometimes feels like they still have a little bit more than we do as far as industrial, warehouse-level stuff. So my thought process kind of has always been that if we could offer that small business exemption, to Councilor Allenberg's point, I wouldn't want to just go ahead with something and create a burden for the majority of our commercial base. However, I don't see as much of a value in having that same rate, because we're not seeing the benefit of it.
Mr. President? I just want to ask a question. Like Councilor Strigle said, we don't want to put the burden on small business. What would be the process for us to do a split rate, maybe the smallest amount, as was suggested, and then, you know, do the exemption for the small business? What is the timeline for that kind of thing?
We could look at it after this meeting. We couldn't do it now, because it's too late to do it for this year, but...
And it's not possible to do so through an amendment at this time?
No, there wouldn't be enough time not to get the tax bills out on time.
And one other component to that, Councilor Allenberg, is when you're looking at exemptions, there's also additional workload and staff requirements. We have a two-person assessing department. Communities that have exemptions have a much fully more built-out assessing department. So in terms of what our chief assessor said, in terms of getting our tax bills out on time, we can't do it this year. If this is something that we're willing to, you know, talk about, explore, you know, for next year, we would like to hear that direction. We can have those communications throughout the year, but in terms of time, staff, you know, we'd have to staff the assessing department significantly different to consider exemptions and so forth, too.
Yeah, and the list that I looked at, when they just gave it to us in July, there was only about 300 that were on the list that are even eligible, and most of them probably wouldn't even qualify this. So I can get you all the information if you want, if you want to look into it further, but there is no way that we can really pick and choose who we want to give the exemption to. It goes by class. Okay.
Anything further? As somebody who poured over this, you know, I look at the scenarios, and in order to have any sort of meaningful impact on the average taxpayer, if you wanted to save somebody, you know, $20 a month, you know, $253 a year, that would shift the burden to commercial by $2,700, and that could be enough to push out small businesses who could absorb the brunt of that. Even if we were to shift it by 5%, $60 a year, $5 a month, I don't think that the risk is worth doing that, making that shift onto our commercial businesses. I think it's something that we should explore and think more fully if we want to have a split tax rate and have exemptions and explore a larger strategy, but I don't think the time to do that is now. Anything further?
And just to piggyback off of what you were just saying, President Loretta, being in the business that I'm in, it will 100% affect the person who is leasing the property. We have plenty of property that is already vacant and not being utilized in the town, so I would hate for a business that has been well-loved in our town to have to move to a neighboring town in order to afford a space, especially spaces that are antiquated, need a lot of infrastructure improvements on top of high lease prices. So we already see vacant buildings. We don't need to see anymore, so I do think that if we seriously want to consider this long-term, it is a long-term conversation, but obviously, we need to get the tax bills out. I do still think that there is value in exploration, because it's idea-driven. So I'd rather be idea-focused and see what is possible for our town and our revenue streams, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But at this moment in time, we obviously need to strike where the iron is hot on our business.
Yeah, and that's a great point. There's about 450,000 square feet of commercial, industrial warehouses, flex buildings, and retail space right now. Vacant.
Vacant. Okay. Well, if we don't have anything further, I will close the public hearing. Right now, it is 8:03 PM, and then I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'm setting a factor of one, yes. I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have license, a number of license transactions. These are our annual license renewals. They are completed every December. First up is Petition P. 2026-005, Annual Licensing of a Common Carrier Taxi Service Business. I will defer to our town manager if he would expand on some of these here.
I'll quickly say, sorry. Deb Ward, who does a significant amount of this work, I want to give her the credit. She does this, but I do know that she's worked expeditionally with our collector's office and our building department to make sure that all the requirements on the town end have been met and all the fees and any taxes owed have been paid. I think we've made improvement in that area from previous years, so I do want to credit the team for doing that work and defer to Deb if she wants to add anything further.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Ward? Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, Bill's Taxi Service. And I'll entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next, Petition P. 2026-006, Annual Licensing of a Secondhand Gold Pawn Shop. Anything on this one to our town manager? No? I'll entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Petition P. 2026-007, Annual Licensing of Automatic Amusements, Establishments Without Alcohol. This is for Bridgewater Sports Complex. Anything on this one? Okay. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, what are the amusements? This is a curious bystander. So not actual amusements?
There's no roller coaster.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, P. 2026-008, Annual Licensing of Lodging Houses. And do we have any updates on this one to our town manager? There's a number of lodging houses here, and I assume that they're all up to date and everything?
Correct. I spoke with our building commissioner today. Everything in terms of fees and everything in terms of building inspections have been compliant with our requirements, so no concerns on our end.
Great. Do we have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
Thank you. We were contacted as a council by a resident regarding the status and the condition of 40 Central Square. You can drive by 40 Central Square and see that the building itself does need quite a bit of work and love and attention. It is part of our historic district, which adds a complexity to the matter, but just from the outside looking in and the knowledge base that I have in my career, I adore the people that work for this town, but I question whether or not the outside of that building is as sound as... It should be, for the simple fact that the paint has peeled off to the point of disrepair, and like the resident said, one storm could really do some damage, and if you're having people housed within that, I then look at the complexity of then re-housing individuals that need housing to begin with. So out of all of them, I think because they're all on the same one, my question was if there was a way for us to pull off to get more information from that specific applicant, but I do think that we owe it to residents, whether they are in a lodging house or living in a cul-de-sac, to ensure that they're living in a safe environment, so.
To our town manager, do we have the capacity to do that, or would that be recommended? Or is that even in the purview of us granting an application, or is that some sort of other standard we need to hold them to?
Well, there's a few things there. You know, I'll let our town council sort of weigh in a bit on there, but one, I think you can have one lodging house removed and approve everything else, but I would just be trepidatious about that. One, I know for a fact that our fire department and our building commissioner was out on site on that particular property today. In terms of building inspections and codes, they are compliant. I think there's a general knowledge that there's maybe some aesthetic issues there. I would provide information for the council, you know, we're not going to... Imagine if this was a residence property, if they didn't maintain their vinyl siding, you know? That's not something that the town really should be in the business of getting involved in. That's not my recommendation to you to do that. You obviously can make that consideration, but that's not my recommendation to you. Our town staff, they've paid their bills, they've paid the fees. Our building and our fire department have approved them as being compliant. They've done everything required to receive their license.
I'm personally wondering if there's a better path to kind of enforcing something like this, maybe increase the robustness of our historical district standards. Maybe that's the better path.
One thing, the other thing is, we don't have an ordinance specifically to manage that issue. So if that's something that you would like to explore, that's the mechanism you do to address that issue.
That's what I was going to say. This is part of the historic district.
Yes.
And we have the Historic District Commission. I also know that years ago, maybe like 15 or 18 years ago...
I also know that years ago, maybe like 15 or 18 years ago, a former councillor, Peter Collobotis, and I surveyed the whole downtown for the state to get funding money for those kind of houses to do, to do the facade replacement and, and upgrade and all of that sort of thing. We got money. We were doing it with another town. The other town goofed it all up. It never got used. But maybe there's a, maybe there's a place there. You know, maybe there's someplace like that that we can work on.
Thank you.
I was just going to say the same thing. Facade Improvement Program, Historical District Commission, but if it passed the safety part, I, that's what I would worry about, the fire and suppression system and things like that right in the center of our town.
Yeah, one of the initiatives I've wanted to work on with whoever else would like to work on with me would be facade improvement program. We talked to our town manager what that may, may look like. We could have a zoning ordinance to improve the robust, robustness of our historical district standards and see, yeah, maybe that's part of a comprehensive downtown revitalization. We could send that over to CED Downtown Revitalization Committee. We could have that kind of worked upon. So I would love to see that work being done. If anybody wants to go ahead and do that, we could get that, get that going and make that happen.
I, with councillor Strickles, I read that email as well. I've sat out in the common and looked at that building, and as a central building in our downtown area, it, it does not look like what we would expect a building in a downtown in this part of the, the state to look like. We have a lot of buildings in the downtown that are under assessed based on their location. We should have buildings that are worth and bring in more revenue based on their location in our town, and they're not due to the poor quality of those buildings. So if we could have a further discussion on that, that would be something I'd also entertain. And I, you know, removing this at the moment, I would hate to see people removed due to the ordinance from where they're staying. But I, I hope those business owners are watching this because it sounds like we are all aware of the condition and state of that building. And it may pass fire inspection, but the quality of the buildings is something also we need to look into for, for our town and where people stay. So I, I think, I think it would be a good thing to further take a look at and see what we can do to help raise the values in our downtown area as a whole.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to circle back on everything, if everything checks out, all of that, I just didn't want to have one of these additional rounds of licensing renewals come up and have it not be part of the conversation, that we're handing a license renewal to owner that we hope will in the future participate with us and do some structural improvements to their building to only better our town and honestly better their property value. So I think that it's important when a resident raises a concern for us to take it seriously. And when they're all lumped in together, it can sometimes get lost in the shuffle. So I did just want to have the conversation. So I appreciate the conversation. I'm willing to assist in any type of an ordinance to get that going, and I think it's really important, especially for our common area.
Agreed. Thank you. Anything further, councillors? Okay, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, petition P 2026-009, annual licensing of common victueller establishments for non-alcohol. There are a number of ones here, of course. Do I have a motion for approval and second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on, on this one, councillors? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have petition P 2026-010, annual licensing of Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 auto dealers. Again, there are 21 businesses on this one. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, petition P 2026-011, annual licensing of entertainment license. This is just one applicant here, Fire for Effect Foundation. Do we have a motion for approval and second for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have petition P 2026-012, annual licensing of establishments with alcohol licenses. There are a total of 37 businesses on this application. Do we have a motion for approval and second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
What's the total number we can have? Do we know the?
Total number of licenses? Does our town manager know that information?
Yeah, it's, it's in our packet. I know Deb has it. It's, this is all alcohol licenses?
Yeah.
Yes.
Restaurants is 33 for all alcohol. Beer and wine is seven. And then beer and wine restaurants. Beer and wine package stores is seven, and they're all taken.
Mm-hmm.
And, no, beer and wine package store is six, and they're all taken. All alcohol package stores is seven, and they're all taken.
Okay.
And that's what we have.
Okay.
And the restaurants is only 21, I would say.
Yep. Good question. Anything further, councillors? Okay.
I would just take that as a, a sign that if you are a up-and-coming restaurant and would like to come to our town, we have room for you. So that would be a great way to fill some vacated rental space.
Good point. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that was the last one, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay, we have no presentations. We'll now move on to town manager report.
I will try to keep this timely, to keep this meeting moving, moving, but there were a couple of questions asked about MBTA, MBTA parking lot. It's managed by MBTA and BSU. They keep that revenue. I know a question was asked, is there any revenue share, anything like that? There isn't. A question was asked about the municipal parking lot, and when the contract expires, the contract expires in 2028. I also know, you know, there was a discussion about a previous agreement with MBTA about Bridgewater never having to pay assessment. We've dived into this pretty in-depth. There, there was never any agreement made on paper to do that. That was an agreement and a discussion discussed with all communities, not just Bridgewater, with the administration at that time, saying you house a MBTA, a site on your property, on, in your town, you won't ever have an assessment. It was never written, there was no agreement regarding that. That was a discussion with all communities. Ultimately, you know, administrations changed, and administration changed, and they decided to make an assessment on all communities in MBTA. So, you know, I appreciate that, you know, people thought there was some written document regarding it. There isn't any document. It was more verbal. The only document that specifically for Bridgewater contained payments for, you know, taking of a property and a small donation for improvements for a storage tank. But there was never any commitment in writing to not have an assessment. Moving forward, town food clothing drive. The town has been having a food and clothing drive that began on November 24th and runs through December 19th. There's a call for non-perishable items, newer gently-used clothing and winter essentials. There's drop-off bins on the first floor of Town Hall. And the donations will go to the Bridgewater Food Pantry in our Central Square Congregational Church to support our residents. So I want to acknowledge the work that they're doing. I want to acknowledge our HR department who sort of spearheaded this and our employees who are participating. We're encouraging residents and anyone else who wants to participate to do that, too. I know that I've met with the congregation, there's a lot of people utilizing the food pantry services, and they're asking for support and assistance with that. So that's a small effort we're doing. You know, I was asked of me to highlight when we had a call for our pictures for the new town website that we're working on. So I'm just mentioning that that information is on our Facebook page. There is a, a, a email portal that you can email those photos to, is webphotos@bridgewaterma.org. IIT specifically told me I had to say there's no monetary payment for selective images, but photos will receive photographer credit. A residential survey. I anticipate in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be releasing a residential survey for residents to talk about, you know, town services and obviously what we're hoping for in the community. I anticipate we'll have that released before our next council meeting, so I wanted to let the council know that. We'll, we'll promote that survey on our website and on social media. It's an online survey, but we will make sure that we have paper surveys in place at the library, the senior center at Town Hall, for those who don't feel comfortable doing it online, and we'll try to navigate that. And we'll also work with our town clerk to just put some information regarding that when they send out the census, to let people know that we are doing that effort to hear directly from the residents. I want to highlight the town manager operational update. You know, once again, this is released monthly, so obviously goes to the council. We put it on our website and our social media. We recently refreshed that operational update, but a more important component that I really want to emphasize for the community is that I've added an ask a town manager component to that. And that gives another opportunity for us to reach out to the community if there's specific questions that you want addressed. Send them to my office. I'll try our best. We address a question every month, and that's just part of my commitment to try to have more communication and collaboration with the community. And then in regards to that, finally, I'm also going to be hosting another open hours, office hour session on December 17th for the community at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. We'll promote that on our website and social media. I encourage people to come out if they can. We've now had, you know, several. We've had different venues. We've had the senior center. We've had individual meetings. We've had group meetings. This is another effort to just reach out to our residents and allow them to reach out directly to me and speak with me. Our next one will be via Zoom because I want to be cognizant of the fact that some people haven't been able to either come during the day or come in the evening. So our next one will be Zoom as well. So those are my updates.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of our town manager or requests for future town council meetings?
Yep, I appreciate the MBTA update because I tried to dig into that myself, and that kind of led me down a bit of a path on pilot programs. So I believe we do have that 153,000 or so that gets calculated into the pilot program for the town from the state. The pilot program in the state goes back a few years. In 2020, the state auditor noted that the program itself is underfunded. We aren't receiving enough. I also tried to find information on whether or not we receive any pilot funding for BSU. It appears as a carve-out for UMass, but there is not a carve-out for the state colleges themselves. They may be lost in the mix here through a different network of who owns the property, who runs the property, things like that. We also have new, a new fire academy in town, a satellite site. And what I was looking to try to initiate is the possibility of Bridgewater trying to put together, based on the state's previous system and including all of the land that the state does own that is not taxable by us, our own pilot study to investigate where exactly we sit based on their metrics and including BSU in those, including the new satellite fire academy, and trying to see if we can affect the study that they're supposed to be having. Governor Healy put in an executive order to, for a commission to then study these things, and I don't know how long that's even going to take. But what I'd like to be is proactive and try to actually take an assessment to the state and say, here's what we look at through your numbers, including these, and try to get more money back, whether it's through a pilot program at the state level, which we have no control over, whether it's information to give to our state representative Gallagher, or just an avenue to be proactive in trying to get more funds from the state because we do have a unique situation here with the amount of land that the state owns. And what we're getting back isn't enough. It's already been stated that the program itself is not appropriately funded, and I would like to see the town get more based on what we have in, in the town and the services that we provide for those, whether it's response readiness for the police department and the fire department, especially the fire department. Those are incurring costs. I know we get a kick, we, we get money back from insurance companies on a transport, but the readiness cost of always being available 24/7 is things that we need to calculate. And I would like to see us just try to take proactive response to this in the future. I know we have a lot coming up, but I just wanted to start the topic now, and hopefully we can have conversations in the future about this.
Thank you. Anything else for our town manager?
I have one. Mr. Casanova, with the new fire station opening soon and knowing two men on a engine is not really safe for our firefighters, nor the residents, will overtime be in our budget for the firefighters until we can get more staff? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to discussions. So I do have on for this evening, water quality discussion. This is a council discussion. Unfortunately, our DPW director is sick with the flu, so I'd love to have a discussion amongst the council with everything that has kind of been brought up, you know, to us, to the council, to our town manager from, from residents. Obviously, this is something that we've already discussed earlier, but I want to have that discussion here at the council level and then to ask some questions of our, of our town manager. He already alluded to some things earlier, but I would like to just start off with a couple of questions of, of my own, if you're able to answer them. Some, the, the questions that everybody asks, you know, it's a two-year timeline. I know they're being conservative with that, and I know that we're waiting on DEP approval, but what specifically are we waiting for them to approve? And what can we do in the meantime to be proactive? Is there any, can we go out to bid? Can we start construction? Or anything like that? I don't know if you could speak to, speak to that?
Yep. Obviously, we want to be cognizant that our DPW director isn't here in our team. This was one to get some discussions there, but we did mention at the last council meeting exactly what we're doing regarding that, but I want to elaborate a little bit further. In May, this council approved loan authorization of $7.5 million to do work to tie those wells to the treatment plant. And so what we said at the last meeting is, we're going to do that work. We don't need DEP approval to work on the water main while we do that work. So what we've done is we worked with our engineers, we're finalizing the drawings for that to be able to go out to bid to do that work, hopefully by, by the end of this year and early January. So we're already doing that process to make sure we can get ahead of that and do that work in advance of that. So we mentioned that at the last meeting, and so we, that's exactly what we're doing. And we will, we will execute that.
Thank you. That's the question I hear, hear most from residents is, you know, definitive dates. So end of the year, hopefully, we're going to be able to, you know, get out, get out to bid and, and start that process.
Correct.
So that, that'll be, that'll be really, really helpful. And then we also talked about some, I call them interim solutions. We've, we've discussed some of them, some of them that, yeah, I've kind of came up with myself, but we're also kind of on the same page. You talked about emergency connection. We've talked about, at least I brought up the idea of a mobile trailer. We talked about that offline. Both those are very expensive. Can you speak to, speak to a little bit more to either one of those? Is, is one more viable than the other? Are they both on the table? Where do you kind of see that right now?
Yeah, once again, feel like we're reiterating the same points, like, I want residents to know in this council, because I've said it, when I came here, I said, one, we're going to look at it with a fresh set of eyes. We obviously have a new water superintendent. I'm new here, and I directed my team to look at every opportunity and all things available to us. I had my own ideas. I tasked them with my staff to take a look at it. We've talked with DEP, we've talked with our regional partners. So we've looked at a variety of things. You know, obviously with an issue like this and safety, you have to account for finances, obviously, but we want to prioritize some of these issues. So where we said, we'll do the water main, we're looking at the emergency interconnection with our, some neighboring communities, Middleborough and East Bridgewater, for example. But to elaborate on that a little bit further is that, you know, I mentioned there's a lot of logistic issues that go into that with East Bridgewater. They treat their water differently. What effect does that have on our corrosion in our pipes, et cetera? We have to negotiate rates to different pressures. Well, how do we get their water to us? There's logistics from Middleborough of getting it to the town. There's a lot of things that go there into that process. So we're all working towards that. You know, like I said, we're, we've communicated with DEP, we've communicated with our engineers and consultants to look at a variety of these things. And, you know, hopefully, we have some progress fairly soon. We are working expeditionally on it.
Are you able to speak to a timeline for a potential implementation of any, either one of those solutions?
No.
Are we talking weeks, months, multiple months?
No, because, and that's why, you know, I understand the frustration that there, we can't give a timeline on that because there's requirements to work with partners. You know, I'm meeting with the Middleborough town managers. We've had multiple conversations. I've had multiple conversations with the water superintendent. My staff has had conversations with them as well. You know, we have to get approval from their end, just as long, as well as DEP. I can't give a timeline on that because what if they say no, right? What if they don't want to collaborate with us? What if we aren't able to navigate some of the issues there? I hope to be able to report on that fairly soon. And I think I've made a commitment, like I said earlier, every month since I've been here, we've touched base and given an update on water to say where we are, what progress we're making. You know, this isn't the time, this is a discussion for the council to apprise me of any issues or concerns you want me to try to address at our next council meeting. I hope to have some, an update for the council and the community at that next meeting.
Thank you. So I'll bring the discussion to our council. Anybody would like to start with the discussion?
Sure.
Sure. Through you to the town manager. Justin, first of all, I feel bad for you for inheriting this mess. This has gone on for a long time. The can has been kicked over and over again, and I applaud the residents that are out there that are, you know, bringing this to the forefront. I know it's been a priority of yours. Do we have any update on other suggestions that were mentioned before, which was to buy water from other communities? Not the emergency hookup, but Taunton and, I don't want to say it too loud, but the city right next, right nearby, which I don't favor. But is there any new, anything new on that?
Like I said, well, first, before you say apologize, I mean, I don't need any apology. I apologize to the residents dealing with this. That's who I really feel bad for. And that's what, once again, like I said, we're prioritizing trying to address the issues that we're facing. The last update that we had, there isn't any interest with Taunton to, to collaborate with us. Once again, as I said, there's a commitment to look at every opportunity. I know there's been concern about Brockton. I've reached out to their team. They had an administration change the day after. I had an email and saying, can I get a meeting with you? We've met with them before, but I'd like to get a meeting with you to talk about these issues. So we have already scheduled a meeting regarding that. I have to acknowledge that though, too, that's years away. There is no, there's, that's years away. There's a significant amount of funding, there's significant logistics, there's a, there's a lot of things that go into that. But we are looking at everything, everything. People, we will keep reiterating, we're looking at everything.
Just one follow-up on that note, and I'm not going to make it a secret that I'm absolutely opposed to that because of what it's cost Brockton over the years. They could have bought the water plant like 10 times over at this point. It's an old plant. The infrastructure isn't great. It was kind of, Brockton was forced into it because it had a water ban forever and ever. You know, one of the residents talked tonight about a moratorium. We talked about that at one point. It sends the wrong message, but we can't continue to overdevelop when we can't fix the problem to begin with. And I've been adamantly clear about that from day one. I've been painted as anti-development, which I'm not. I'm for responsible business development and growth. You know, you gotta do things, you know, that are ancillary to that besides water and sewer. There's also traffic. I mean, you inherited quite a plate. I think you knew what you were coming into, so I won't apologize to you. I just, I kind of, I kind of said I felt bad for you because this has been known for a long time, and it has not been addressed properly in the past. I'm confident you will address it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, town manager, thank you, Mr. President. Town manager, Mr. Casanova, I hear that the water is getting worse in different parts of the town, and I think it's because eight of Bridgewater wells are located in sub-basins, and this is on a permit. So in August, the net groundwater in these sub-basin depletes 25% and more. And that's why, because of that, there are special conditions and mandates, there's seven conditions that limit restrictions from May 1st to September 30th. So we keep pulling from the same basins, so even though we're going to get the wells beyond it, we have that problem. We need to get water from a different direction. And I know we've been talking about the Vernon wells, but we can't keep pulling from this because it is getting brown. I'm on Plymouth Street, so my water is on and off brown. But I'm also concerned, like the resident brought up, at Curve Street, there's 150 houses being built, and the last 60, they're asking for a variance so they can have more bedrooms in those 60s. So we need to keep track of this stuff because I'm watching the buildings and I'm watching the planning boards and the zoning. So not only do we have the water brown, but we have to restrict or figure out a way before we approve all these, you know? So I'm hoping that we can work on both things. Vernon well, so we're not pulling from the same thing, and controlling the buildings and the bedrooms. It's the houses that have, you know, four or five bedrooms they're asking for. So we need to limit that, and I don't know if we can do that by an ordinance until we fix our water. But hopefully, the zoning or the planning will control that, or you can speak to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the updates, and I just had a couple of questions before I kind of make a comment here. We, we approved the loan. Can you just, because we have a lot of people watching, so we can understand how that money, how do we get that money for that loan? Did that come from the state or is that from us?
It comes from us.
Comes from us.
Loan authorization, authorization, the particular loan authorization that we reviewed today was hopeful that we'd have either access to a no interest or low interest loan from the state. We didn't have that, so obviously, that loan authorization, if we do go out to borrow, which we intend to do to do that work, would be us going out and getting a short-term interest loan or going for, you know, a bond project.
Okay. And we, we've had some private discussions on this, but we have applied for loans similar to what Middleborough got to fix their infrastructure, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And in addition to that, one, we're advocating for grants earmarks. I know we have Rep. Gallagher here, but I've talked with him about that. I've talked with our other representatives about additional resources that we can do to mitigate the costs on the users, which is, once again, a priority of my team, and I know the council. So we're looking at all those avenues.
So just because we have a lot of people watching, anyone that is concerned or has questions about your rate increases, I would advise you to go watch our meeting on July 15th. We had a consultant come in. I can tell you, for those, personally, I pay for town water. We get brown water at my house. I have a wife and three children and a mother-in-law who lives with me, and it's, it's not fun having that brown water come out of your faucet when you're giving your kids a bath. So we do feel what's going on. Some of us live in different areas of town. This is a priority for us. I don't like voting to increase my own water rates and pay for a product that I recognize is not a good product, but the reason we have to do that is to have money to fix the problem because without money, we can't solve the problem. And it's a, it's a very tough situation that the town is in, and I know everyone keeps saying it's not a new problem, but that is the reality. It's not. And I do feel like as a council, we have tried to take proactive steps to set things up, not just immediately, but down the line when we need more updates, to have the funding available, which is why those rates were increased. So it may have been popular for a period of time to not increase rates because no one wants to pay more money for what they have coming, coming into their house. But, you know, we had to make that decision, and the council made a tough decision to do that, and that was just one of the steps. So I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Take a look at that July 15th meeting. It has a lot of information on what has been going on and where we're projected to be. And I do think a lot of councilors felt pretty comfortable with setting us up for, for success in the future, but we have immediate issues. And I appreciate the town manager and the town, and the council president for also trying to take a proactive approach and try to find some of these solutions for this because it is, it is a huge problem.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what Councilor Kennedy said, I know for me, it's an issue of funding across the board, right? We've sat here and we've heard about Chapter 70 money and the lack of funding going to our schools and what we're seeing there. We've sat here and we've talked about Chapter 90 money and our roads that are deplorable and we can't improve or change. Something needs to change at the state or federal level to help support Bridgewater, and it's my goal, just as the gentleman came up here earlier and said, that folks are leaving our town because we can't support the services that are necessary and actually are rightful to the citizens that live here. So for myself, I've been advocating at the federal level. I secured a meeting with Senator Markey's Appropriations Committee for some of our town employees and some of our councilors who potentially join us, to advocate for those earmarks at that level as well, too, because it's not going to fall on our citizens at Bridgewater solely to pay for these improvements or to get us to where we need to be for schools, for roads, when we're paying to the state and we're paying to the federal level and we're not seeing a return. We, we talked about the MMA report that was shared and in our agenda a few meetings ago, and the lack of local aid that we're getting. I think that's all a problem, and that's all that needs to be addressed. So for myself, while I'm not an engineer and I can't lay down pipe and improve water quality, I can advocate with our representatives for the funding so that our citizens don't have to pay for the neglect that we've given to our water system for the past 10 years by not addressing it appropriately and now being left with $130 million bill to make the necessary improvements to the water system. That's what I'm going to do as a councilor, and that's what I'll continue to do, is to advocate at that level so that our citizens don't have to pay for what is abysmal in terms of the town services that they're receiving right now.
Thank you. Councilor Ellenberg.
Yes, I have a concern about our water usage. We are having the MPA voted on tomorrow, and that will bring tremendous amounts of housing to Bridgewater. So this is going to deplete our water even more. So a resident mentioned a moratorium. Well, we really can't do a moratorium with the MTA breathing down our neck. However, I am of the view that we should not be supporting the MTA requirements until the state has made a commitment financially to us. Now, this is a case of almost like chicken. Who's going to give in first? Do we vote for MTA or do they commit the money? I say, standing up for the citizens, the state has to commit the money.
Anything further from our councilors? I want to echo a little bit of what Councilor Murphy said. He, he and I and a couple of my other councilors were at the Chapter 70 meeting, and we were advocating at that, at that point for our schools, but I think the general sentiment is to get more help from the state, for the state to allocate more funding to our communities, to increase unrestricted government aid to our communities, which has dropped, if you take into account inflation, by 25% over the last however many years. I forgot what the timeline is. But the point is, is that we cannot expect our taxpayers to shoulder this burden alone because it trickles down to everything, as Councilor Murphy was, was mentioning. It's, it's water, it's roads, it's our children, it's the schools. And we only have so many limited resources, and I think the communities like Bridgewater get lost in the fray. We don't have the tax levy as, as a community such as like Weston. We were in the talks of the override earlier in the spring. There's a lot of people comparing us to some of these more affluent communities that could shoulder the burden of these more expensive overrides and, and debt exclusions, and we just don't have the ability to put that on our taxpayers. So we do need to lean into our state government and federal government because I think we already pay enough in taxes to the state, and I think they need to kick back more of that to our, our communities and look forward to working with Representative Gallagher and, and advocating for, for our community here. So I think that's a multi-pronged approach. I think that there's, there's a lot going on, but in the, in the interim, we do need to solve this problem for our residents. They, they deserve better there. As Councilor Kennedy said, we're paying a lot of money for an inferior product, and we need to improve that immediately. I look forward to an update at our next meeting. I would like to see an interim solution implemented as soon as possible. However, it's something that's been, you know, going on for, for years now, so we don't want to implement something haphazardly that's not the right approach, right? We don't want to bring in a trailer, which I know is, is dozens of thousands of dollars a month to, to, to fund and to, and to filter out the water. The emergency connections, I'm not sure what the cost is there, but I know that's expensive. But we want to make sure we, we pick the right solution, but we need to do so, so quickly. So I hope that we could find the right balance of, of speed and efficiency as we continue to do this. The residents have my commitment that this is going to be on our agenda until we have something in place that's going to be working towards a more immediate solution as we continue to try to build that, that pipe between the 10A and 10B wells and then the High Street Treatment Plant. So hopefully, we get that done faster than two years, but in the, in the interim, we need, we need relief. We need something as soon as possible for, for our residents. So.
So you're just committed to having this on every agenda going forward?
Absolutely. We're going to, we're going to be talking about this until it's fixed.
Thank you.
And there'll be some meetings where we have a, a very detailed update, and there'll be some meetings where, where we won't have an update. But the residents, they have my commitment that I will put this on the agenda until we have something in place. So we will continue to do that.
And you made a suggestion, it may have been on social media, about those two meetings a year that we're going to have. This, this should be one of those topics.
Absolutely.
In my opinion, and because the three-minute citizen comment isn't enough. I mean, there, there were people that want to say more, and three minutes limits that discussion.
Yeah, well, later on, we're going to be talking about our town council meeting dates for 2026, and I've been working with their council clerk to schedule our first public meeting, and I think it's seven or eight years. So that'll be a meeting of the public, members of the public could submit items for, for discussion. So I look forward to hosting that in, in January, and we look forward to that, that input and the engagement from our residents. I think that's how small government works best when everybody's engaged. Anything further?
Thank you. I threw you to town manager Casanova Davis. I, based on the conversation now shifting from the east side to the west side of town, I do think that part of our next discussion might be, it might be advantageous if we start exploring why that's happening, because if we're broadening the scope of the problem, that $130 million feels like it could get even bigger faster. So I think that that's an important avenue to start exploring, to just make sure that we're at least studying why and making sure that we're giving residents on the west side of town the same consideration so that maybe the problem is stopped dead in its tracks versus having to play catch-up. So that would be.
Thank you. And just to wrap things up before we move on, I did send our town manager and our department heads an email asking to, to address that, that exact question. The system over there is a closed-loop system, and we're going to hopefully have some information as to what that, what the size of that loop is so we could see exactly how, how far that contaminated water from 10A and 10B is traveling through the system. How, how far is, are those levels of manganese getting into the rest of the system, and how far is it, and how far is it going? So that we could fully understand what's going on there, because the levels of manganese that we're able to test out of 10A and 10B have doubled over the last 10 years from what I could, what I could find online. So there's definitely a trend with the increased levels of manganese coming out of those wells and then the number of complaints that we have from, from our residents. So how, how far and how big does that problem spread from, from the epicenter? And then also, I asked to look into additional testing just to see exactly what's going on, because now that the, that the manganese is in the system, is there sediment in the pipes? How far do we have to flush? You know, what's, what's the full protocol there? So that's something that we'll hopefully have an update on for our next meeting. Like I said, we'll, we'll expect to have this on the agenda.
Okay, just quickly, just to make one acknowledgement for Representative Gallagher, thank you for being here tonight. There are folks that represent us that haven't shown up or haven't reached out, but I truly appreciate you showing up to our meetings and showing a presence and an interest. So thank you for doing that, and I want to acknowledge that. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right, so we will wrap up our discussion. Thank you very much, councillors, and thank you to our town manager for, for engaging with us. Next up, committee reports. Do I have any committee reports from our chairs? Budget and finance met earlier, but we could work on those updates through our legislation for action here. Okay. With that, we'll move on to legislation for action. First up, FY 26-031 transfer order for prior year bill. This is for the sewer fund. The finance committee met on November 17th, and they voted to recommend 7 to 0. And I'll pass it to Councilor Murphy for an update from earlier.
Budget and finance committee of the town council met this evening and voted 3-0 to recommend.
Thank you. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion.
Motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have FY 26-032 transfer order for contractual payments. Finance committee voted 6-1 to recommend their November 17th meeting, and Councilor Murphy?
Budget and finance also voted 3-0 to recommend this evening.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Thank you. Second for discussion. Second for discussion. Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, FY 26-033 Transfer Order CPC Engineering for Multifunctional Fields. The Finance Committee voted 5-1 and with 1 abstaining to recommend at their November 17th meeting. And Budget and Finance met earlier today.
And Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend.
Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
Move.
Second.
Don't move.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one, folks?
I'm simply going to say that I'll be voting, I'll not be voting.
Yes, you'll be abstaining. That's correct.
Discussion. It looks like this is being recommended by various parties that will be using the premises. So it looks like I'll go.
Yeah, this looks great. This is the first phase of a number of phases. I think they said two or three. So this is for the initial engineering. So look forward to the result of that and to have that project move forward.
As someone who played on these very fields in the late 90s and beginning of the 2000s, they still look the same and they're probably a lot worse at this point than they were even when I got to use them, which they weren't great then. So I'm really excited to see what this can do and help that area, especially for our kids. So I think it's a great use of funds to get the process started and I'm excited to see what they can come up with.
Thank you. Anything further?
I played on them in the 80s and they haven't changed as well.
Councilor Murphy?
Early 80s. Just a quick comment. I made during Budget and Finance, this is an unbelievable project that has a million benefits to it. The cost to maintain these fields will obviously increase and I just ask that we all be mindful of those costs being reflected to families. And we try to avoid that at all costs, knowing that, no pun intended, knowing that our families are already paying additional fees at the school system. So to our recreation apartment, just to keep that in mind.
Good point.
I just wanted to comment because we have a lot of people here for water and they could be seeing that we're going to pay to fix a field when we have water problems. And I just wanted the public to know that the funding for this comes through a different avenue than fixing the water sources. So it's not that we're paying to fix a field and ignoring water. Or I just want everyone to understand that this comes from a specific funding source that does have some match from the state. It's very unique in the avenue that that money can be spent and it needs to be spent on things like fields or historic buildings and things like that. I just wanted to clarify that for who's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then one abstention. Next up, we have order FY 26-035. This is a transfer order, general fund, free cash allocation. The Finance Committee and Budget and Finance Committee met earlier this evening and the Finance Committee, I believe, voted, how many, do you know how many were in attendance? Was it eight?
Eight.
Eight, zero in favor. And then Budget and Finance, Councilor Murphy?
Voted 3-0 in favor. And just a shout out to our Finance Director, who as always, she does a great job breaking it down and explaining it. If folks have any additional questions, I would advise them to go back to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting and just watch that through. There's a good explanation of where that free cash goes and how it's kind of broken up into different funds.
So do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion on this one, councilors? Yeah, just a quick note, it'd be great to go back and watch our meeting. We talked about this extensively. We did have a large free cash number and glad that we're putting a lot of that towards capital. So for anybody at home that wants to look at the documents online, we're allocating $2.5 million to capital. So we're looking forward to hopefully making some more capital improvements this year. So with all that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have order FY 26-036 Transfer Order, Bridgewater-Rainham School District Operational Review. We met earlier this evening and Budget and Finance, I'll ask Councilor Murphy to give the update and then do you have the vote for Finance? It was split.
Finance Committee voted 7 to 1 not to recommend. So that was the Finance Committee. And then Budget and Finance also took up the order this evening and voted 2-1 to recommend.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval and then a second for a discussion.
Second.
So I'm sure we'll have a little bit of discussion on this. Anybody would like to start?
Can anybody describe why the Finance Committee voted no?
I'll give my interpretation. I'll have my other councilors also chime in. There is a bit of discussion over, should we be spending this amount of money for a review? And the scope of the review. Some folks wanted a larger scope, some folks wanted to not do it at all. And it just was a discussion over, should we be spending the money to do this? That would be the most simple way to explain it. I don't know if my other councilors want to speak to that.
Yes, Mrs. Hunt, some of them said that, doesn't the, do schools already do this? And we explained that sometimes an outside person needs to look at the inside and that's why we thought it's appropriate to do this.
Anything that we missed?
Yes. I would be supporting this because I think that transparency is very good for the town. I hear through the grapevine that we're going to be trying for another override. Perhaps if transparency is arrived at, perhaps the override will be successful. We'll have to see what the voters say. Anyway, I guess my microphone is off, so I'll talk louder. Anyway, I think that this will improve the residents' trust in local government. And this is not a full audit, which would cost $100,000. I guess the microphone's back on. This is, I've got a phone new one. This is considerably less. We're talking in the $30,000s. And it is for an operational review, such things that drive the school committee to have to cover certain things. We've got sped, we've got the buses, transportation, students going to other schools instead. All of those, if they are reviewed, perhaps we find more efficiencies or ways to save. And if we don't, we don't. But the fact that the review will have been done, I think will encourage trust amongst the citizens.
Thank you.
I think this is very important to do. I think between the ad hoc group, the working group, between the school committee and the councilors and the select board in Rainham, both parties are sharing the cost in it. It's something to show people. I don't think you're going to uncover wrongdoing or malfeasance or anything like that. I think it's going to educate people properly. The last time we didn't have any chance to educate people properly. And obviously, there are still going to be people that you can't afford an override, okay? But it builds public trust.
Thank you.
I've been in favor of this as it's gone along. I think that this is a good thing to do, as other councilors have stated, when it comes to not just public trust, but looking into what's going on within the school system. We do control the money and since, you know, I agree, I was at the meeting, many of us were at the meeting, where we met with the school committee, the district in Rainham. And this was a discussion that took place there and it was agreed upon. So I'm on board with moving forward with this. I'll also add that a recent school committee member did resign and brought up some issues that they had found. I don't know if those are going to be covered in what this review is, but in a lot of people's eyes that I've spoken to, it's raised additional concerns over the operations. I hope nothing is found. I do. But I do think it's an appropriate thing based on where we are right now and moving forward, regardless on where the discussions take place, as to, you know, overrides or what we're looking to do. A lot of people have been looking for some kind of an audit of this sort outside the scope of the regular yearly things that we do. And I think that this is a good move to fund this and just take a look and see if there's places for improvement that can be offered.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Let me do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Ellinger?
Yes.
Council Strickles?
Yes.
Sorry. Council McGrath?
Yes.
Council Laredi?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
No.
Council Hunt?
Yes.
And Council Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have FY 26-037 Transfer Order, Bridgewater-Rainham School District Capital Plan Transfer. We met earlier this evening and I'll ask Councilor Murphy for an update.
Yeah, do you want me to give the Finance?
Yeah, Budget and Finance, yes.
Finance Committee voted 7 to 1. So that's Finance Committee to recommend. And Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend. Sorry. 7-1, 3-0.
Thank you. And to explain a little bit about, it was 2 to 1. I voted no because I wanted to explore amendments. I spoke with our town manager and I also heard some commentary from our superintendent. And I think that at this juncture, it would be pertinent for us to approve this. But I would say that, you know, moving forward, we are going to have a different capital process and I look forward to that and having some more input. My hesitancy was that we do have some items on here, such as, you know, water filtration system, which is something that I would like to explore further and I would encourage the school district to look at that, to make sure that that's the best path forward to solving some of the issues that they're having there. Obviously, we have a lot of water issues in our town, so if it makes sense to solve that problem upstream or by looking at a larger solution such as replacing certain pipes, I like to see personally what the cause of that is. That was my hesitancy. But to, you know, move forward in a best faith effort, I would support this kind of moving forward. So with that being said, I entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion. Motion. And a second. Any discussion on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Powers, I want to thank you for the detailed, that you sent all the councils on each thing so it's more in detail, we know what's everything used. I'm hoping that maybe we can put this on the town Facebook so that all the residents could see the one we got, how detailed it was, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Resolution FY 26-002 Town Council Meeting Dates. I introduced this and we voted to keep this at a council level. This is simply a resolution for our meeting dates for 2026. And as I previously alluded to, we're looking at, at this moment, at least January 6th, to be a public meeting. That doesn't need to, nothing on this needs to be changed, but we were just mentioning that here because we did talk about it earlier. And that would be a public meeting before our regular council meeting. And if we are able to, we will host a second one. Our charter does call for it, but we haven't done it in a long time, so we'll see how this first one goes. I'm looking forward to doing that. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, Resolution FY 26-003. This is the FY 2027 Budget Resolution. We deliberated earlier in our Budget and Finance and Finance Committee meetings and I'll ask Councilor Murphy for an update on those two.
The Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend and Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend.
Thank you. So just for some of our councilors who, there's a lot of fine print here, we did change a couple of things from previous years past. We changed the projected surplus at a 1% versus a 2%. The idea here is to give our town manager the flexibility of potentially increasing more in our operating budget so that we can then support some of the roles in town. And then we also look to increase the amount in our reserve allocation. So I think both of those are well-intended. But obviously, this is a resolution, so we'll see what our town manager comes up with for a proposed budget and then we'll continue to navigate the budget process as we work towards this winter and into the spring. So with all that being said, we'll look for a motion for approval and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment. Thank you for, Council Perry, for putting this all together and for the updates for those folks that also weighed into the town manager budget objectives piece specifically. I would love to see something reflected in the town manager's objectives related to obtaining state and federal grants as a whole. I think we addressed it in number five here, specific to Chapter 90 funds. But I really think having a comprehensive sort of sentence or goal in there to just say that our town manager should be seeking additional revenue opportunities, I think would be great, just given the financial restraints we're at. Obviously, it's probably superficial to put in here as well, too. So I'm not completely hung up on it, but just throwing it out there for discussion.
It's fine. Again, a lot of that hinges on whether we're compliant as a community to be eligible for those, for that, you know, going after for that funding. So there's a caveat in that regard. So unless we are, you know, go forward with what's coming up on the next day or so, you know, we look at potentially after that. But right now, it's probably putting the cart before the horse unless we're compliant as a community.
Anything from other councilors?
I actually think it's a great idea to add that, just in general.
It's a resolution, it's not binding. I think that, you know, the spirit of having something in there, because there's a lot of different ways that we could do that. There's a lot of advocacy that we could potentially do. So do you want to throw in an amendment out there or do we want to continue this?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just wanted, I wanted to point out, number one, and I know just because of the format and the font, the town manager's objectives probably need to be shifted there. Actually, number one, you do say that.
Oh, there it is.
We're going to be doing that. So there's no issue with that.
I did miss that completely, so.
Caught in between the end of the page as well, so I acknowledge that and I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Your role.
I guess we're good then.
I will draw. I made a motion, but.
Stand down. Anything further?
And thank you for making that number one.
Priorities.
It's your resolution, you made it one.
Anything further, councilors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last up for legislation for action, FY 26-007, this is an ordinance, sorry, ordinance establishing the process for filling a vacant town councilor role. Rules and procedures met on November 14th and they did vote 3-0 to recommend. Councilor McGrath, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
No, we were very appreciative of how thorough it was and we couldn't find anything that we would want to change.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to refer to advertising and a second for any discussion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We do not have any old business or new business, so we now move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may come up at this time and speak. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steph D'Amelia, Harvest Lane. First, I want to just let you know that I apologize for coming up here and constantly seeming as though I am complaining. I am venting a little bit. There is a lot of frustration. I don't mean anything, no ill will by it. I know you guys are all working hard. You do the best you can with what you have and that's all we can ask for as residents. Back in May or June, there was a situation that came in front of the town when the university had turned on their water supply and used 750,000 gallons in five days. And they were asked to explain and they said, we'll get back to you on that one. I believe if that happens again this May after graduation, that could be a much more serious problem. And I was just thinking maybe now would be a good time to make sure that doesn't happen again and put something in place. 750,000 gallons in five days is a lot of water. Our water issue is more than just one issue. In September, our town engineer deemed it a public safety issue. So that's one thing. And the other thing is it's now a public health concern. And the fact that a young gentleman came in here tonight and stood at this very podium and said he came to Bridgewater and he's starting to raise a family with his pregnant wife sitting in the corner and having to stand here and ask for help for water, to me, is shocking. And if that is not an immediate reason for an immediate response to fixing this problem, I don't know what is. Because I think everyone in here, in some way, shape or form, has known, has either raised a family or starting to raise a family. And to have to come here and ask for help for water is appalling to me. I'm sorry, I can't. I'm sorry, I can't not imagine what it took for that young man to stand here and ask for help. It's insanity. It doesn't make any sense to me at all. The other thing that kind of bothered me a little bit, and I know Mr. Davis said, I believe our DPW director has the flu and that happens and I get it. But we also have a CED director. We also have a water superintendent. I don't know. I don't know. I think this is pretty serious. I do. And it's saddening. It's saddening. They're not here. How could you not be here? They didn't know? Don't care? Maybe they don't even live in this town. You know what? Now that I think about it, maybe they don't even live in this state. And maybe they just don't give a damn. And they're just going to leave it up to you guys and us to figure it out. I don't know. That's how I feel and I'm sorry. And I'm not trying to be a complainer. I don't, I don't like it. I don't even want to be standing here and then it's on YouTube and I get people texting me. I don't want that. You know what I want? I just want what we deserve. A good quality of life. Just drinking water for that young man and his soon to be child. It's awful. I'm going to jump off the water thing for a second. And we stood here a while back and we talked about TIFs. I'm sorry?
We're at three minutes. Do you mind wrapping up in like 30 seconds or so?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Striggle said there was someone concerned about 40 Central Square. Maybe you can give them a little incentive somehow, you know, maybe a 0% loan with CPA money or maybe a tax break or something. And I don't know, just thinking outside the box. I wish I had more time, I had a little bit more to say, but that's okay. Thank you all for everything you do. I really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Amelia, I would just encourage you to just email us as a council and we would love to hear what else you had to say.
Thank you very much. How you doing? My name's Sean Conway. I'm a resident of Braintree, Massachusetts. Kelly, I don't know if she's still here.
We just need a motion to allow you to.
I'll make the motion to allow him to speak.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I wasn't going to speak. I met some of the council people here before at a different meeting, the RTC meeting. That's when I came upon this. I was doing some testing in the town. Everything in this meeting that was said tonight, I'm an owner of a water filtration company, Clean Tap Water Solutions. We partner with Britor. And it's so, this is such a serious problem that I sat through this two hour meeting with you guys, right? We have such serious issues and I just want to let everyone know that when you turn to buy water from another town, Taunton or Brockton, they have the same issues. This is really going to come down to like a state issue. I'm a father. Like, I understand this. I'm a lucky guy. I'm a Bitcoiner. I put this system in my house two weeks ago. I went to the meeting and met these people and I saw how small government works and that's why I was super impressed. But this is on the state level. I have the Director of Research and Development from Britor coming in town in 14 days. He's here for two days. Mr. Gallagher, I'd love to meet with you. He'd love to meet with you. Would love to, we can help you, right? They can help you. They, they have tons of money, right? They're the biggest water filtration company in the country. So I'm just here to say, I know, there's no blame, right? There may be some blame on some older people in this town, people that have been here and just kicked the can, but there's no blame right now, really. It needs to be fixed. It's disgusting. We see this on Facebook every day and, I mean, it's disgusting. It's a real issue to me. I wasn't going to say anything. I just came to learn a little bit. Thank you for letting me speak. I hope that I can help in any way. I've been a master plumber for 30 years in the business and my business partner is retired Boston Plumbing Inspector, 60 years of plumbing experience, so we'll help.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Jennifer Lupo, Aldridge Road. I just want to say that I second the items that my fellow residents addressed earlier with a few important requests in addition to those. I think it would be helpful, instead of the grapevine, to put a quick link on the landing page of the town website. As of last night, the, the plans that everyone talks about are not easily accessible on the website. I did look last night and it wasn't very clear to me what the ideas are and what the plans are and what hasn't worked and what has worked and who's accountable for what. It's like, we don't want to be on Facebook after working all day to try to figure this out. We're paying our bills. We're paying for a service. We're paying for a product and we're not getting it year after year after year. If I do not do my job as a project manager, guess what? I get fired. I'm accountable. I taught my children to be accountable. I raised two kids here. I worked two jobs. I'm a single mom. And we need to do something together and the information needs to be clearly in a quick link just for this issue. I've been the president of the PTO. I ran a board. I ran the budget. I run millions and millions and millions of dollars in projects at work and I know how this all works. And I know that you are all working so hard with no thank yous, only hate. And it needs to stop. The information needs to be clear. And I think that will help the whole community to move forward. We know our water's dirty. We know this and that. And my hair's breaking off and I have acne now from the water. A lot of people have the same issues, we know. We've been talking about it until we've been blue in the face. But the facts need to be on the website. We would love weekly updates. We tried this. It didn't work. We were denied. We're going to try this route now. I think we all need to email on a state and federal level together. Put out a letter that we can email and what email to use and unite. We're more powerful in numbers. And so that's just my two cents. And although I'm just as frustrated as everyone else, I do appreciate all of the work that is done behind this. And I really hope that we can get past this and make a difference sooner than later because it is a health issue now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Garrison, 255 Walnut Street and co-founder of Bridgewater Unfiltered. Just, I don't have anything new to say that hasn't already been said. I'm a lifelong resident of Bridgewater. Lived here my entire life, other than college. I remember when the water was good. I remember when we didn't have water bans, maybe one in August in like the mid 80s. It was such a big deal, they'd put a metal sign out. It said, "Water ban in effect" when you headed into town. So I've just, you know, I'd like clean water, like everybody else. I'm happy to see the momentum here today. You know, it's taken a little while to finally get everybody, I think, to this point where they're so frustrated by the, what's coming out of their faucet. We all work, we have kids, we have families. You know, it's, sometimes it's hard to care. It's like, oh, it's orange again, you know? Oh, well. So it takes a lot, I think, for every person you see standing here complaining there. You know, there's so many more at home that can't get here, that don't have the time. But the frustration is real. So obviously, we want clean water. The one thing I would take objection to is, you know, that you can't put a timeline to certain aspects of the project because, because it involves other people. You know, I mean, like in business, there are timelines, right? You have a project and you set a deadline and yes, most projects do involve, you know, cooperation with other people or other entities. That doesn't mean that you, like, you don't have a timeline at all for those, for those types of projects. So I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christiansen, South Drive. And I thought I had an original idea, but those two ladies just did what I was about to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. We have a two-year project. It'd be great to see the phases outlined, who the project manager is and percent complete by week or every other week, you know, just like a normal business. It's just, it'd be great, you know, then you see some progress and relieve stress, you know, from the, you know, town folks. So. And a link on the webpage to that report. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Christine Banky, 36 Magnolia Way. The first thing I wanted to come up here and do is thank you all for showing up at the meeting for the Chapter 70 funding, important to our school district. And I was really happy to see some of you there advocating for that alongside of some of the teacher, teaching staff and school district as well as the council for the school committee. I was excited to hear about the $2 million for capital improvement. And also, I love the fact that Sonia brought up 40 Center Square. I think pride of ownership goes a long distance in a town. And I think that that's something Bridgewater can continue to improve upon. I know that I've mentioned before my plans to potentially work with the town on renovating some of the, what are they called? The islands, the islands within town, Adopt an Island Project. I would really like to put that on the agenda for the coming year. The next thing is the water, obviously an issue. Definitely a water issue on Magnolia Way. My daughter and I both have noticed hair breakage. I took a shower six times last week. All six days I got out, my hair was disgustingly gross. Couldn't wait to get to New York, got a good clean from there, much better since I got back. So definitely something we have to look at. Something that I was thinking about is, are there any short-term solutions that we can do as citizens to help replenish the quantity of water that we have? Obviously, we're draining from the bottom of the barrel for some of these wells. If we can allow, like, put in simple measures to allow those wells to refill, will that make a difference at all? So something to look at. The vacant properties in town, I know that last meeting, we talked about the fire department. I know that was brought up and that it's going to be a building that now will potentially just be a building that's open. The transition to move out of that building will be, take some time. But can we utilize those buildings, that one and the other ones that we own in town in a different kind of way? Can we run youth center programs through them? Our base before and after school care, another option for that, or indoor farmer's market, some sort of option to utilize those spaces to create revenue for our town. Something to think about. Thank you again for all your time and your efforts constantly. Appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay. Thank you all for your participation and your comments and I really appreciate it. Okay. Lastly, we will move into council comments. I'll start with Council Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I just want to thank every citizen and every resident that came here and spoke out forcefully and on the record and some offered solutions. And there's some good ideas out there that we should definitely take advantage of. I know our town manager is absolutely committed to doing it, but part of the discussion down the road has got to be development and overbuilding. And I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost. We've got to fix the problem. If it wasn't December, I would love to suggest a 90-day timeline because I think it's that important. Okay? I know it's not easy to meet that, but I think we should come up with a goal. Unfortunately, it's the month of December and a lot of stuff doesn't happen during that month for good reasons. It was very educational to go on that school tour and see the condition of our buildings. I was, had hoped to go on the Rainham side, but I have a conflict, so I can't go on that. Hopefully, I can go at another time. But in the Chapter 70 hearing that, you know, four of us went to, we weren't quorum, we didn't violate quorum, but we got our point across. And the fact that Representative Gallagher is here and cares and had sat in our seats on the council and will do everything he can to help us, we just need all the rest of them to do it, too. We need our senator. We need our congressman. We need our US senators times two. I'm not sure Massachusetts is going to get a lot of funding, but that's a whole nother story. Good things on a positive note, we see beautiful lights in the common due to a citizens committee. I know they're still raising money. They're selling ornaments. Help them out. I hope to get one myself. The library has a giving tree where people can adopt young men, women, people that don't have anything. Okay? You can pick up an ornament on the tree and buy the gift unwrapped and bring it back. Library is going to offer coffee, cookies and carols on the 10th from like four to eight library hours. And today's Giving Tuesday. It's almost over, okay? Because it'll be Wednesday soon if we continue to stay here. We have great organizations right here in town to support. One of them is Josie's Village that does, helps out with seniors and works with our council on, you know, I call it council on agent because I'm used to Brockton, senior center paired with people that are fine and then people that have dementia. Could be a good cause. There's so many good causes. And I want to thank, I couldn't go on Saturday because I had a funeral unfortunately to go to, but the Lions who did an outstanding job on the common as usual under the direction of my fellow councillor, Kevin Perry. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Council Hunt?
Yes. I hope everybody noticed, if you came in the front door instead of the back door, that the freezers are now up in the downstairs and one as you come up the stairs or go down the stairs. 1912, those were given to the town as a gift by the McElwain's for the McElwain School, honoring their son, William, who had died. He's the one that the school was named after. And it's taken me eight years to get them found and refinished and thanks to the CPA for doing that. I think they're really quite beautiful. So. We'll eventually have a sign put up that explains what all of them are, but that's not quite there yet. I am thrilled to say that I'm going to the MMCA training for new councillors on Friday. I'm sure we were all invited to it and it's a long way away up in Boylston, but I'm really happy to be able to go there on Friday. Happy to give anybody a ride who wants to go with me. I was going to say something about the lights in the common following up on Winter Wonderful and give them a donation if you can. We've given them as much as we had left over from the past. And a thank you to Lisa Bazzell Curly and Jeff Fowler, who's, who've really added that. The BSU chorus is going to be singing on Sunday at 4:00 PM at the Congregational Church. It's always a great concert, a lot of fun. TJ Squared is doing their dinner fundraiser Friday at 6:00 PM at the Vets Club. And tickets are required, but it's good to help our TJ Squared team. And the Vets Holiday Celebration is Saturday, 12/6 at the Vets Club. So those are the things that are happening this weekend, I guess. And I hope everybody goes to some of them and everybody has a great time.
Thank you. Council Murphy?
I'll keep it short and sweet since these two stole all my events.
Sorry.
Christmas on the common.
Yeah, again, thank you to the school committee and Superintendent Powers for giving us a very thorough walkthrough of three of our Bridgewater schools. I know I attended with a few of our town councillors. It was incredible to see the students in class, learning. One class in particular, knew all our names, knew who we were, knew what we were working on. And so it was incredibly impressive to see. But also, it was helpful to see the challenges that they experience every day in terms of class sizes, restrictions on physical space and what the teachers go through on a daily basis. And so thank you again to those folks. And then also thank you to the fellow councillors that went to Lakeville with me to advocate for that Chapter 70 money. We had a great showing, as one of our citizens just mentioned, from Bridgewater Rainham. And I think that, you know, those type of things make all the difference in the world. So appreciate you all for joining me on that piece. And thank you to the Lions Club for the center in town. It looks incredible. The lights look great. The decorations look great as always. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to my fellow councillors for the mentioning of the work on the Common. Again, it's a lot of people coming together to put all that together. Again, I want to thank Lisa Bazell Curly, Jeff and Al for their work and fundraising for the lights this year. Also, obviously, the Lions Club, we get together that morning to pull everything out the trailers down by the water department and bring it all the way up to the Common and get it all set up. I just stick around a little while longer to fine-tune it all. But it did come out very well this year, and the lights are popping even brighter than in the past. So it looks great. And I just want to remind people too, the BBA's Christmas on the Common is this weekend, Sunday from 12 to 4. There will be a small holiday parade right beforehand, kicking off from the O'Donohue Middle School. I believe people getting together around 11:30. I think it's kicking off around 11:45. So if you want to participate, have a group that want to be in that parade, contact Lisa Bazell Curly, because I believe she's arranging the parade. She does everything. I also want to congratulate, I've been following them all season pretty closely, but the BR football team came up a little short in the playoffs against Bishop Fian. It was a heck of a game. But they were quite successful in closing out their season against Brockton on Thanksgiving. So I just want to congratulate the whole team, as well as Coach Ian Vane. He's done a great job with the team, and I look forward to great things ahead for them. And again, I just want to close by, you know, thanking all the residents for coming out here tonight. Obviously, the water is a huge concern. You know, I want to reassure that, you know, the town has been working on it. A lot of things have been built and been developed in recent years to help push us in the right direction. There's just need to be some more pieces that need to come together to get it all the way there. We have a new filtration system on High Street that took a number of years to plan and build. We've got two new wells, been rebuilt. Obviously, the biggest thing is wells of 10A and B and connecting them to High Street. So we're going to find ways to get it done as quickly as possible to try and get this situation remedied as soon as possible. And again, we want the highest quality of services and water for the residents of this town. So we don't want to see anybody leave town. But it's going to get done as quickly as possible, as financially supported as possible. But like anything, it does take some time. It does take money. So we're going to find the best ways to get them both done as quickly as possible. And I'm working on it with the rest of the councillors here. So I just want to let you know that you're being heard, and we'll do our best to get it done as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Striggle?
Thank you, and thank you to everyone that continues to attend, especially this evening. Hearing from voices that we typically don't hear from is always refreshing, only because it provides a new perspective on an ongoing issue that we're all very much aware of and working every day to make sure we can combat it. In the event, this is my last in-person meeting. I just wanted to extend everything and all my well wishes to everyone for a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and a happy Kwanzaa. I will be 39 weeks pregnant at our next meeting. So if you don't see me, probably means I've had a baby or I've been put on bedrest, which is an ongoing conversation. So ultimately, because I just don't know how to relax, clearly, I'm here at 9:30 at night. And here we are. So I also just want to really commend Lisa Curly for her commitment to our town when it was just brought up that the lights seem brighter and just more magnificent than they have been in the past. I do really feel that way. I feel like there's a lot of love and attention that went into this lighting specifically, specifically the ornaments, the town really coming together to make sure that our community always shines brightest at Christmas time. The Lions for always doing a great job, making sure that our town maintains the traditions of our town while also doing things that are things that we didn't necessarily have when we were kids. And finally, I just want to also state how thankful I am for Town Manager Casanova Davis. You have been on the job for six months as of yesterday. And I think that it goes without saying, but you are inheriting a lot. You are inheriting a lot of bad habits, mistakes, and wrongs that you fully intend on making right. And I do think that as residents that also sit on a council, we have a different perspective of your leadership. But I hope that residents can attend some sessions, get to know you more personally, and see that things that you do say in this room, you walk the same talk with us as you do with them. So I just really wanted to give you your kudos, and I'm happy that you're here. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ellenberg?
Thank you. I'd like to compliment our town manager, who works very hard on our water issue. I'd also like to compliment the residents who brought this to a head in terms of issues. I think Representative Gallagher and other state officials and citizens need to all come together, unite behind our town manager, and make this a priority in the state with our governor. We need to do this. And I'm calling on the citizens to support our town manager, our state rep, our council, to do this all together. And then, of course, there is the issue of the MBTA, which is being voted on tomorrow on a Zoom meeting. And MBTA building will put our water situation even worse. So like I've said before, I would like a commitment from the state before we just say, nilly-willy, "Oh, sure, we'll build." So that's what that is. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa to everyone. I also want to compliment Lori Guarino, our Treasurer, for really doing a fine job on the budget and leading us through why things have to be done in a certain way. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
A lot of what I had to say has been said, so I'll keep this short. I want to thank Al, Jeff, and Lisa for what they do in the Common, as well as the Lions Club. The time put in for that really does make the center very nice, especially during this time of year. I want to thank the citizens that have come out tonight for the first time and who got up to speak for the first time. It's a tough thing to do, to put yourself out there, and your voices are needed. Show up to meetings. Please get engaged. There's plenty of places to be engaged in town if you find yourself wanting to do more. But just showing up and communicating the issues you're having is important. And please continue to do it. It was really nice to see not just new speakers, new faces, and a lot of the same committed residents that follow everything in the town and stay on top of things. So thank you for your involvement. It is great to see that. I appreciate my councillors for tonight. I think we had another productive meeting, so thank you all. I appreciate, Councilor Murphy, if you need any assistance in reaching out to any of those reps or anything at any point, please let me know. I think if we reach out with residents as well at some point and try to coordinate more voices to get things moving in a direction that is helpful for Bridgewater, I think that would be great. So thank you all, and have a good night.
Thanks. Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Saturday, I went to an open house at the Bridge Center, the Easter Sales Mass. I'd never been there before. Their programs are designed to meet social, emotional, and physical goals of each individual. Those horses are so gorgeous just being there. It gives you peace. But Mr. Martin, our veteran agent, is getting a program there for our veterans too. It's a really great organization. And I appreciate all the residents that came out, and I encourage you to get on one of the committees. You can make a big difference in town.
Thank you. I go last, and everybody has said everything already. But I do want to thank my fellow councillors that were at the DESI hearing. It was very productive, I believe. And somebody from the state, I forget her name. She came up to us, and she was so impressed. She actually asked who coached Bridgewater to get up there and testify. And I said, "No one. We just do our homework, and we know what we're doing. We know what we're talking about." And we actually all worked individually prior to going to the meeting, and we were very prepared. And it was, it did not go unnoticed. So I was really happy to receive that feedback. This weekend, I'll be at the Veterans Dinner. I'm looking forward to that and looking forward to the Christmas on the Common on Sunday. So it'll be a busy weekend for events, as Councilor Hunt let us know. And thank you to all the citizens who've engaged in the water discussion. I think, like I said before, this is when small government works best. It's great to see folks who are usually here advocating, but it's really great to see new folks advocating. Unfortunately, it is under the circumstances that it is. But it's good to see people getting involved and speaking out. I remember being on the other side of that podium last year, and man, that's nerve-wracking. So it's good to see people get up there and speak and get involved. Maybe you'll be in one of our seats, you know, one day, serving your community. So thank you all for, again, coming out and advocating for our community. With that being said, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.
Cue the music.